So, this is the planning board meeting for August 7th. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the planning board of the township has been provided. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so Mark Dancy asked to be excused this evening. Councilman and Barson?
Here.
Theodore Chase?
Here.
Robert LaCourte?
Here.
Sammy Siobhan?
Not here.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Here.
Mahir Rafiq?
Charles Brown?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
Rebecca Hilbert?
Here.
Chairman Arcini?
Here. So, we have no minutes tonight, but we do have a number of resolutions. So, first one on the docket, L'Oreal USA.
Okay, Bob LaCourte, Sammy Siobhan, Mahir Rafiq, Rebecca Hilbert, and Mark Dancy cannot vote.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Councilman and Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Arcini?
Yes. Second one is BSRP3 Logistics, logistical acquisitions.
Just Rebecca Hilbert cannot vote on this one.
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilman and Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Robert LaCourte?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Arcini?
Yes. Third one's Executive Drive Investments?
Just Rebecca.
Move to approve.
Councilman and Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Robert LaCourte?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Mahir, oh, she's not here. Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Arcini?
Yes. Last one, Cal Sterling LLC.
Councilman and Barson and Charles Brown cannot vote.
Move to approve.
Second.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Robert LaCourte?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Rebecca Hilbert?
Yes.
And Chairman Arcini?
Yes.
Oh, let the, I didn't, let the record show Sammy's here. Sorry, I didn't see you come in.
So, no discussion items tonight, so we'll go directly into general public comments. So, this portion of the meeting is for any comments not associated with either hearing tonight, either Chad Rossback or 1231 properties. Those will have here openings to the public of their own where you can comment on anything related to those applications. So, this is just for any general planning comments that the public may have. So, with that, I move to open the meeting to that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward to microphone, state your name and address. Seeing no takers for this part, move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the first hearing up is Chad Rossback, so PLM 240003, and you're up. Now, the board may be wondering why these are hearings and not minor subcommittees because they have variances.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is an application for a minor subdivision for a parcel of land owned by Mr. Rossback at 4 First Street, Block 449.01, lots 42 and 43. The application is to take the existing lot, which is 32,000 square feet, and to create two 16,000 square foot lots retaining the existing home on one of the lots and building a new home on the second lot. This evening, I will call Mr. Rossback, and I will also call our site engineer who prepared the subdivision plan, and then Mr. O'Brien to present planning testimony to justify the variances that we are seeking. If we can have Mr. Rossback sworn.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out.
I do.
Please give us your name and address.
Chad Rossback, 4 First Street, Somerset, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Mr. Rossback, you're the owner of the property in question, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And do you reside at 4 First Street?
Yes, that's correct.
And with whom do you reside?
I reside there with my wife and my three children, who are present in the back.
Okay. And how long have you owned the property?
14 years.
Okay. And you are seeking approval to subdivide the property to create two lots, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And on the subdivided lot that is, would be currently vacant, you're proposing to construct a dwelling, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And for whom are you constructing that dwelling?
That dwelling would be for myself and my family to reside in.
Okay. The present house that you reside in, how many, how big is it and how many bedrooms does it have?
The present house that I reside in is a ranch. It's approximately 1,000 square feet, and it's a three-bedroom.
Okay. And is it adequate for your family's needs?
No, it is not.
Okay. And so, your intent is to build the new house behind, so to speak, your existing house, although it fronts on Second, and then either keep the other house and rent it or sell it, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. One last question. In the report that was generated by the TRC, there was a question of the location of the pipelines on the property. The pipelines that are shown on the plan, were those pipelines dimensioned and located by the pipeline company?
Yes, they were.
All right, you called the pipeline company to come out and locate them for you?
Yes, I did.
And the engineer then put them on the plan based on the location of the pipelines by the company?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And also, as part of the application, your driveway to the proposed house was, would be across the pipeline, correct?
That is correct.
And did you discuss that with the pipeline company?
Yes, I did.
And do you have an approval, should the board grant this application, to build that driveway across the pipeline?
I do have an approval from Enbridge, correct.
Thank you. I have no further questions of this witness.
Any questions from the board?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman. There is some grade, a sidewalk and some grading in their easement. Was that discussed with the pipeline, the grading?
I'm not sure of, in my neighborhood, there are no sidewalks, so I'm not sure.
There's a sidewalk for the proposed, for the proposed house, and to accommodate the house and the driveway, the plan shows proposed grading in the pipeline easement. Was that discussed with the pipeline company?
The pipeline company was provided with the notice of the application. I don't know if Mr. Rossback spoke, did you speak to them about the grading?
We went over everything that had to do with them and the pipeline and the easement setback. I guess you're referring to the sidewalk for the house. That was all talked about with them, and they were okay with everything.
Did you say that you had something in writing from them?
I do, I have, I'd have to sift through my phone, but I do have an email confirmation that I signed stating what I intended to do, and they verified that this was okay by them.
And we'd be happy to get that and supply it to the board.
Mr. Lanford, you're aware, we have had an application recently where grading within an easement has, was an issue, so.
Yeah.
You know, it's one thing to have improvements over it, but then you're also changing the grade in that easement, so.
Yeah, we will get you the paperwork to make sure you and the engineering department is comfortable with it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for this witness? If not, you can move on, Peter.
Mr. Fletcher.
So, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you out.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Fletcher, for the record, state your full name and your business address.
Paul J. Fletcher. Business address is 54 West Pond Road in Hoplawn, New Jersey.
Okay. And, Mr. Fletcher, you are both a licensed engineer and a professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
And this evening, you are, you will only be providing engineering testimony and no planning testimony, correct?
That is correct.
And the subdivision plan, that is the subject of this application, was prepared by you or under your direction?
That is correct.
Okay. Can you describe the subject property and Mr. O'Brien?
Just note that he's accepted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yes, the subject property commonly known as 4 First Street, lots 42 and 43 and Block 449.01. It's a through lot with frontage on Second Street and First Street. The existing house fronts on, on First Street. It is 160 feet wide, 200 feet deep, street to street, total of 32,000 square feet. Property is located in the R20 zone, and applicant proposes to subdivide the property in half, leaving the existing home on a lot with frontage on First Street and creating a vacant building lot with frontage on Second Street. Applicant further proposes to construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling with facing, facing Second Street. There are a number of variances associated with the application. Firstly, lot area, this is in the R20 zone where 20,000 square feet is required, 16,000 square feet is provided for each lot. The other variances are for rear yard setback. For the proposed house, the rear yard setback would be, proposed to be 20 feet versus the 50 feet that's required. And for the existing home, the rear yard setback would be 40.2 feet versus the 50 feet required. With those exceptions, all other bulk standards are met with regards to setback, lot coverage, total impervious coverage, building height, et cetera.
Since you're on the topic of variances, let me just ask a quick question. So, in, in the TRC report, the third bullet, the variance for distance from a gas transmission line, I know Mr. Rossback went over that as his discussions with the pipeline company. What's the existing condition? How far away is the current house from that pipeline?
It's about, from the nearest gas line, about 50 feet.
Okay. So, this would then reduce that just by dint of building, the new house, to, from 50 to 25 would be the nearest setback. I mean, obviously, the existing house is not moving, so it's going to be setback the same amount as currently.
The existing house is in violation, and that will not change. The new house will be a new violation to the pipeline.
Right. But I'm just trying to get at what the closest thing is now, because that way, you know, if it was 100 feet, it was complying, and you're going to 25 feet, that gives me more of a question than that.
I understand.
And just to reiterate what Mr. Rossback mentioned, he had, he had the, the gas company actually stake out the pipeline location. We went in the field with the survey crew, we located those flags, so that the depiction of the gas line location as shown on the plan is, is accurate.
Now, Mr. Fletcher, you've had an opportunity to review the, the TRC report from the township of Franklin dated June 19th, 2024, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. We will not talk about the variances, because Mr. O'Brien has to earn his fee this evening, so I'll let him talk about them. With respect to the property, is it now serviced by public, the existing house is serviced by public water and/or public sewer?
It's serviced by public sewer, but I believe there's a well.
Okay. And with respect to the new house, there is water in the neighborhood, and if, if we can get water to the property, is it the applicant's desire to service it with public water, if available?
If possible, otherwise, he would be.
Putting a new well in.
Putting a well in, yes.
But the new house will be serviced by sewer?
Yes, correct.
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Can you please put the mic closer to your mouth so they can hear you?
Is that better?
Yep, that's better, thank you.
The next comment for the record, that the Franklin Township Historic Preservation Advisory Commission had to review the application. I appeared before it last evening, and they took no issue or exception with respect to the application.
Christine sent us that information, so that's good. Let's just go back to number three a second on the water mains. So, you're gonna adjust your plan that shows an existing water main, where according to township records, no water mains exist on either street. So, I don't know how you tap into water. You'd have to be on well, unless you.
No, there is actual water line over on Maxwell, which is across from this property. We may be able to access it. So, our position is if we, if we can bring water to the property, we will. If we can't, we can't, but we'd have to work that out with Mr. Houck and the Water Department. But there is, there is water in the vicinity. It doesn't funnel along the property, but Maxwell is, is not too far from the subject property.
Okay. Just make sure your plan's correct, because if it shows mains on First and Second and there isn't, then.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, just to speak to that issue, our ordinance has a, in the bulk table, there's a footnote in the R7 zone, R10 zone, the R15 zone, where if any lot, you know, R7 zone, if you have both public water and sewer, the minimum lot area is only 7,500. R10, if you have both public water and public sewer, it's 10,000. R15, if you have both public water, public sewer, it's 15,000. But if you lack either one of those, the minimum lot area becomes 20,000 square feet. Presumably, the public purpose of that is that you need a larger land area, perhaps a need for greater separation between septic systems and wells. So, I think there's a clear, you know, zoning purpose that's repeated in our ordinance, that if you're lacking the public water or public sewer, the minimum lot area should be 20,000 square feet, and the applicant's proposing 16.
Yep. I mean, at least as of this plan, and we can only judge the plan that's just before us tonight, which is gonna be well.
Well, again, I, I would hope that the board would accept our representation, that if we can get wa, public water to the property, we will.
Right. I know you intend to, but as of tonight, we have no evidence that you can.
That is.
We have no input from the Water Department, so we can only judge what is before us.
That is, that's correct, Mr. Arcini.
But Mark's comment raises another question in my mind. Is there, is there any way that the project can be designed so that we get one conforming lot out of it? Maybe the one with the new house is 20,000 square feet. The side with the already existing variances is 12,000?
I don't know if we can get it. It's funny, I, I looked at this today, and I discussed it with Mr. Fletcher, and one of my thoughts, and, you know, sometimes I have trouble being a lawyer, sometimes I want to be an engineer or a planner, was to move the lot line for the new lot closer to the existing dwelling to make the new lot bigger, whether we can make it conforming or not without creating a problem. I think when Mr. Fletcher looked at it, we, we said if we took 10 feet, we first of all would eliminate the issue that was raised in this, in the report concerning the stormwater management. And I, Mr. Fletcher, I think the discussion was that if we took 10 feet off the, or we moved the lot line 10 feet closer to the existing house, then the rear yards of both properties would be the same?
That's correct. They would both be 30 feet. To answer the board member's question, you would need to add, the, the new lot would have to be 160 by 125 feet to be conforming. That would reduce the lot with the existing dwelling to 12,000 square feet.
Well, the bigger vacant lot would suit the.
Yeah.
Proposed bigger house a little bit better, and it leaves a little more space around it, and it has a little more room for the well that might go there. And then there's a, you know, the other, the pipeline, just, just a thought based on what Mark said, our standards are. We don't, we haven't, I can't remember, and I'm not saying we never did it, that we granted variances. I know we've granted variances to building lots in this area often, all right? But usually, that was a lot someone came in and wanted to build a house on it. I'm not sure that we've ever subdivided a conforming lot into lots that are not conforming with variances. That's a little bit of a concern. I know nothing ever affects the master plan, just like the traffic engineer says, you know, traffic never gets worse, even if the development's huge, but I think we could do better with this.
One question from Mr. Fletcher. Mr. Over here, Mr. Fletcher.
Yes.
Where is the existing well for the house?
It's not shown on our plan. I'd have to ask.
The reason I'm asking that is that on the, is it on the lot that's gonna contain?
It is in the front of the house, so it, this, this subdivision line will not impact the existing levels.
All right, thank you.
If the members of the board want us to look at relocating that line, and if that becomes a, and again, I, I know, having been here enough, you don't like to redesign an application on the fly, because that's not, not fair to anybody. But if the board has the sentiment that perhaps, you know, the plan and would best be served, and the board would look more favorably, I'm not gonna say they're gonna approve it, but at least more favorably with the relocation of the line, we would be happy to go back to the drawing board and resubmit a revised plan and, and see if, if the board likes that better than what we have in front of them this evening.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and I'm gonna ask the board to give their comment. I'll just start, because I've been thinking about this a lot. It's not so dissimilar from the other application I need either in principle. So, I like Bob's suggestion. To make this more conforming, is it the bigger house with a 1,000 square foot house? And a smaller lot, the variances may be exacerbated for that lot, but they're a little more tolerable because it's a smaller house. So, as I see it, the applicant has a couple of choices that could reduce the size of their new proposed house to reduce those variances. Or, and still risk, you know, we're subdividing a conforming lot into two non-conforming. Or, I like Bob's plan better. Get the new lot as close to conforming as you can, place the larger house on it, which makes sense, right? Because you'd want more area for that house. And the 1,000 square foot house, you live with a little bit more variance because it's a smaller house. So, to me, that makes sense. That's my two cents. I'll start with Sammy, I'll work my way down.
Yeah, I was just curious to know what it would take to get more confidence about the connection to Maxwell for the, for the water, because that seems like that would be a.
We can look into that, if, if we're gonna do, you know, redesign this a little bit, we can also follow up on the issue of water.
Yeah, because I think if we have the public, then you said it drops down to 15, is that right?
No, it doesn't.
It's still a 20, but it must be a 20, more so than.
Okay. Ever was.
It is R20.
Yeah, let me, let me just explain it just a little more, just so the board understands.
Okay.
I think the, the planning intent of that requirement, yeah, this is the R20 zone, so they require 20, period. But, and I think the assumption is that R20 is sewer and has, and has water. But we have, again, on the lot, on the zones that permit smaller lots, you can have smaller lots in the R7, R10, R15, but if you're lacking either one of those, the ordinance basically says you have to do an R20 lot, you have to have that 20,000 square feet. So, you know, and I wanted to bring that up to the board, because again, that runs through several zoning districts, and it's a consistent requirement that, you know, the town zone plan says we want 20,000 square foot lots if you're lacking either one of those. So, I wanted to bring that to the board's attention, because they are asking for variances, and they're lacking public water.
And Mr. Arcini, if I may, before you continue your discussion, I spoke to my client, and if water is available, we would be willing to extend it to both properties, which may be a compelling reason, another reason for the grant of the variance, that we're taking, you know, the new house and the existing house off wells.
Well, when I was looking to buy in this township, there were two things I never wanted, septic and well. I got half of my wish. I have a septic. But it is what it is, and knock on wood, so far so good, though there've been failures in my area. So, anytime you can tap into public utilities, I support that.
And if that is the case, then both of these lots, if we can do it, would be serviced by both public water and public sewer?
That's all I had.
Bob? LaCourte? Bob, anything to add to what you said?
No, I said what I needed to say.
Charles?
Yeah, as an urban planner, I'm a fan of smaller lots. I think it's a greater use of, of the land that we have available. However, the variances are created here simply for the need for a larger home, of which you have the property to expand this home into a larger home to accommodate your needs. I can't see a need beyond that, other than, you know, financial benefit. And so, to set a precedence to go against the zoning that we have here for that reason, unless justified, otherwise there are other reasons that the planner state, then I'm having difficulty accepting it. I also think that it would be out of character with the community, but if there is a compromise, the compromise would be as Bob stated, make the new one more conforming. But right now, I sit on the fence.
Ed?
I think I have a slight preference for the two lots being the same size, or at least closer to the same size. I don't know that the new house being bigger justifies that much of a change between the two, but I'm aware here also discussion of the variance for setback from the pipeline. If we have a township requirement for that, and at least we'll remember what happened in Edison some years ago, and a pipeline blew up and burned down at least one structure. So, I'm a little wary about, I think the new house would be even closer to the pipeline, and I don't see that there's any way that that can't be the, the case. No, I'm sorry, I'm bringing something else into the question that I was asked, but I still would prefer that the two lots be equal or more nearly equal in size.
Ma'am?
So, I have a different angle. If the sole purpose of splitting the two lots is to accommodate a larger family, have you thought about building an extension to the existing house? I know one side is going to be old and the other side would be new, so that's an option that plays in my mind. Maybe that's not an option for you, but given that, there are just too many. Maybe that's not an option for you, but given that, there are just too many, see, variances that are being requested. If we have to choose the lesser of the two evils, I think I like Bob's idea, make one conforming lot or as close to a conforming lot, and cut the other side down. That might be preferable, I don't know. I have to see the revised plan.
Sorry, go ahead, Jennifer.
No, that's okay. I think everyone up here has made great points. I think the issue right now is, we're talking about hypotheticals, because we don't have an answer on the water situation. If the water's going to be well, that sets up a set of issues. If it's going to be a main line, it sets up a different set of issues. So, you're asking us to think about something where we don't really have all the information we need, so that's my concern at this point.
And again, the issue of the water that came up this evening, I understand, some of the issues that were raised by Dr. Chase and also by Mr. Brown, I understand, we haven't completed our testimony, it's our obligation to convince you that you should grant the variances that we are seeking. And again, we haven't gotten there yet, but I would at least get, like to get the plan before you that would be the most preferable plan, whether you're going to vote it yes or no, that's up to you. But again, if you don't like the existing plan and think it could be made better, I would like the opportunity to make it better, and then you do what you have to do.
Last, certainly not least.
I mean, everyone took the great reasons I was going to hit, obviously, but I think I have to agree with Charles and Ram. Until I have a better idea of why you won't just do an extension instead, I don't think we can justify the variances, and then again, agreeing about the water.
Great. One thing, Mike, I think when you come back, might be a good idea to really lock down with the gas pipeline, that it's okay, the grading issue is not going to be an issue, just one less thing to talk about than...
Be happy to do that.
So, Peter, did you get what you need from us? I mean, I think you have some, you know, pretty clear direction at what would certainly make your case more palatable than what we have before us tonight.
I see it, and I understand it, and I'm suggesting that probably if we can carry this to October, because I don't know if we can get everything together by September, I mean...
Mr. Chairman, do we want, there are some, I don't know if the members of the public here are here for this application, but...
Yeah, we can open, since we've had enough testimony. Let me get them squared away with a new date, and for that, I go to the boss.
October 2nd is not available. October 16th is Macedonia Church, and...
When do we put it on for that night? I'm still working with Macedonia to deal with the issues that you raised at that hearing. So, we may be ready on October 16th, we may not be, but if we move it to October 16th, I should be available to present it, and I think that evening it won't take that long to make the presentation, and then we can move on to Macedonia.
Yeah, no, that sounds good. I mean, it's not a warehouse or something, we have to go to the architecturals or traffic or anything, so we know what we're dealing with, we know the issues, and we can zone in on that.
Okay.
Okay, so then Chad Rossback, docket number PLN 240003, will be moved to October 16th at 7:30 PM here at 475 Demont Lane. I noticed you guys all said you're here maybe for this one. This is your notice, but it'll also be posted on the website with that date, in case anybody else in your neighborhood, excuse me, needed to know about it, so it will be posted there as well.
Do you need an extension, Christine? Or are you good?
Dead Run for Action's 921, so if you give us an extension.
I will give you an extension till the end of November, and I will, if I remember tomorrow, send you a letter.
Sounds good. So, since we have had some testimony, and there may be members of the public here tonight to give testimony, and we certainly want to make sure the applicant hears any concerns from neighbors, et cetera, I move to open the meeting to the public for discussion on this application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's open to the public for anyone who wishes to comment, please. Just state your name and address. You don't have to be sworn in unless you're, yeah, that, yeah, yeah.
Comment or question?
Comment or question?
Both. Okay. Just want to clarify a question. I'd like to swear in, please. Right here.
Oh, thank you.
Raise your right hand. Sadly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Cynthia Bacon. I am a resident of Point Pleasant, New Jersey, myself. I'm here representing my surviving parent, who is a resident and owner at 1440 Easton Avenue, which is a property that abuts the subject property here. It backs into, it's in the back. Okay?
Maybe the wrong things.
The lot, it's block number 449.01, Lot 16.
Can you identify the property that you're, you said it was your mother?
So, it's my mother's property. She's my surviving parent.
Okay, and can you just give me the address of the property, the lot block? I'm sorry.
Of course, it's 1440 Easton Avenue.
Yes, that's within the property, no, it's within the property area. It's around there. It's off of Maxwell.
I'll also make note that a neighbor of my mother, Delia Perez, is also present. She's at 1434 Easton Avenue. Okay, which is right on Culver Street, right there. I'm sorry, Walnut, sorry. Been a while. Okay. We ready?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be present tonight and respond to the variances that were proposed. I also want to acknowledge my neighbors whom I've never met, so, and their team as well. I'm present this evening on behalf of my surviving mother, and for the property that we just mentioned. My siblings, I have three siblings, we were born in Somerset, we were raised in that home, 1440 Easton Avenue. My parents have remained in the house. My mother is, got a medical condition that prevents her from being present here. I have her power of attorney, and I represent her. We maintain many deep connections to Franklin Township, and specifically with our friends and former neighbors in that little neighborhood. My parents' property, as I said, nearly abuts the corner of 4 First Street, backs up to that area, and the home located there, and the property itself is visible from my parents' backyard. So, my purpose for being present is to stand up for interested members of the community, myself, my siblings, my mother, my neighbors, because we do have concerns about this. Now, we submit a firm objection to the variances represented here. We don't submit an objection to building a larger home on the existing property. I mean, I think that's a wonderful thing, but we do object to subdividing an existing conforming lot into two non-conforming lots, and then seeking variances to improve or build on the non-conforming lots. We notice, we have noticed that there's been a recent uptick, if you will, in approvals of building on non-conforming lots. I think the distinction perhaps, and I don't know about all of them, but I think the distinction perhaps there is that those non-conforming lots were purchased by somebody or owned by somebody, and a variance is sought to, you know, build there on those properties. Here, we have a conforming lot, and a need for a larger home on the conforming lot, and we, instead of just building on the larger lot, we're looking to subdivide, and therefore we're stacking variances, is the way I would see that. We feel this way because we have a very deep and, like I said, lifelong connection to the community. My parents purchased their property on Easton Avenue in 1957, built their home. They've been there since then. They have kind of adapted along with the corridor, the Easton Avenue corridor. When we moved there, not moved there, when we were born there, Easton Avenue was nothing more than like a concrete pathway that went through, you know, that part of the township, and we thought nothing. I mean, there was literally no traffic, or the traffic was calm enough, that we thought nothing of running back and forth across the street to visit with our friends and our neighbors, right? Things are very, very different now. My parents have adapted to that as things have gone on. They've also adapted to life on a pipeline. The pipeline runs through a corner of their property as well. Years ago, the pipeline, and it may have been in response to, was right around the time of the disaster in Edison, but the pipeline required that all trees, anything that was covering any of the aspect of the pipeline right-of-way be removed, so that they could fly planes over and make sure that there was nothing obstructing. My parents coalesced with their neighbors, you know, sought counsel to make sure that their interests were, and their safety was taken care of, and so, you know, we have a huge concern about what goes on on that pipeline aspect as well. So, now, to the matter before us, right? So, our neighborhood is, remains zoned as residential. There are different little pockets of different things along that corridor, but our neighborhood, right where it is, it remains residential. Like I said, we're aware of a growing trend, where developers are purchasing the smaller lots that are available, and they're obtaining variances to build on them. This is a variation of that trend. I guess I learned, I had a question to ask, and that was, what was the purpose achieved by the initial request to subdivide, when it appears that there's an interest to, as we learn, to have a larger home, which is a very laudable thing to want to do, and possibly the answer to that is just build a larger home, or develop the home that's existing into a larger home? Zoning regulations, as I understand them, they guide construction and expectation, they respond to hardship, right? They're used to resolve problems. So, it's difficult to understand why we would create a hardship, in other words, two non-conforming lots, then have another spate of variances that we need to address, when there may be a very logical and easy solution. You know, there are other interests at play here, it appears, right? Possibly economic, possibly something else. We're creating hardship here, rather than just resolving hardship. The optics here are undeniable. Situation presents a most questionable application of land use principles, in my opinion, right? There are, there is a conforming piece of land, and now we're talking about jumping through hoops to create all of these other different variances. It just, it doesn't look right, it doesn't seem right, and as somebody who's been in this neighborhood, in this area, watching all of this creep of, you know, different kinds of land uses, it's really, it tugs, it really tugs very hard, and I would just ask everybody to, you kind of step back and think about what it is that we're actually doing here. And then, I wanted to mention, because it's of particular interest to my family in connection with the variances that are sought for the non-conforming properties, the pipeline. The pipeline is known to everybody who lives along there. It, like I said, it passes through my parents' property. I rely on the board to know, you know, you know your authority here, you know what it is that you're able to do, but in the interest of safety, and as an owner that's nearby, my family unequivocally objects to this request as it concerns, you know, being near the pipeline, and building near a pipeline, building near the pipeline. I cite in particular that disaster in Edison. There are countless other disasters with the Texas Eastern Pipeline. Edison is not an isolated incident. I'll give you a few other examples. May 5th, 2020, an explosion in Kentucky. August 1st, 2019, an explosion in Kentucky. January 21st, 2019, an explosion in Ohio. April 29th, 2016, Salem Township, Pennsylvania, explosion. November 2nd, 2003, Kentucky explosion. March 13th, explosion in North Blenheim, New York. I have more, but you understand what I'm getting at, right? This is not an isolated incident, things do happen. Without exception, you know, it's our position that there should never be a compromise of safety standards within the easement and right-of-way of this pipeline, particularly in a saturated neighborhood. These neighborhoods do have properties of different sizes, if you will. Most of the yards remain very large. I shouldn't say very large, they're small by many other standards that go on, but they remain large. But it's a saturated neighborhood, and it's one in which you don't think about this pipeline, but you think about it when you start thinking about it, right? So, now we're thinking about it. So, to summarize, the instant variance applications present more, in this opinion, as an opportunity to address desire rather than need. There's a need to build a larger home. The larger home can be built on the existing lot. It's one thing to purchase or own an existing non-conforming lot, and then seek variances in order to be able to improve that lot. This matter presents as the creation of non-conforming space, that in turn creates the need to seek a hardship variance, and so on, and so on. In view of all of these arguments, many of which I was hearing as we were going along, and in view of safety and the interest of the public, we respectfully urge the board to deny the application for the variances sought. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, thank you very much, and I think, like you said, the board asks questions kind of along many of the lines that you mentioned, so, appreciate it.
I'm a little uncomfortable. You know, I thought that we were opening to public discussion, to give input into the application in terms of potential modifications and things like that. I respect a lady's right to object to it and everything, but I think that's premature in this part of the hearing, because they haven't given any testimony.
Yeah, I mean, I did want to, well, I mean, opposing the application is, you know, testimony and of the public or their opinions. If they don't, if they don't think that variances should be granted, why would they suggest modifications, you know, such as we suggested to the applicant? So, I'm perfectly comfortable with that, given the amount of testimony we did here tonight, but Peter clearly wants to say something, and I haven't closed the public yet, so...
Why don't you do that?
Does anybody else want to say anything? I do know that you mentioned your neighbor who holds much the same sentiments, that's noted, because you're, you know, been, well, the meeting is recorded, so we've got that. So, we know that that person feels the same way, or you represent that. Does anybody have anything different to say than you have said? If not, I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Peter?
Two things. First of all, everybody is sitting here this evening saying that this is a conforming lot. The lot is not conforming. Your ordinance prohibits through lots. This lot is a through lot. It has frontages on both First and Second Street, so the lot, in its present situation, is in variance today. I'm not going to get into the planning testimony, because I think it's...
Premature.
It's premature, but, you know, I just, when you go home, I don't want you going home thinking that it is a conforming lot, when it is...
It's conforming to a lot area. There are, I mean, we didn't get to the planning testimony, so we really don't... There are, I mean, we didn't get to the planning testimony, so we really don't know, or you didn't provide testimony as to how it's currently out of compliance.
Correct.
But you're saying it's out of compliance.
But yeah, but I don't want you to put your heads on the pillow tonight and say, boy, this is a, this is a not, this is a conforming lot when it's not. Second of all, I would hope that, I may have some questions on Ms. Bacon, I'm not sure she's going to come back in October. Okay, so, I will reserve, if I want to, if I need to ask her questions, I don't want to prolong it tonight.
No, that's fine, especially since you're likely to change the plan and, and given what we heard, so there's no sense talking about something that may not be your final proposal.
Correct.
Thank you, Peter. Duly noted about the existing conditions. So with that, we continue to October, what is it, 16th? And you've given us till the end of November, and you're going to send a letter, and so I think we're good. Onward we move to 1231. And thank the board for the thoughtful input to the applicant tonight. Appreciate it.
Yes. Peter, was the sheet filled out from the people that were here for you?
I would have preferred to hear a plan.
You haven't been around for a long time. Whether we do something wrong.
Yeah.
That is 16.
Yeah. Which was, doesn't make sense.
I was born again.
Please use the mic.
Please use the mic. My name is Dominic Sermon Arrow, and I represent 1231 in this application. The two members of 1231 are seated to my right because of the chairs. I'm going to ask them to remain there for now, and then I will bring them up if there's any questions directly for them. This application is, and if I can preface, based upon what I've heard, this is a conforming lot. The only problem with it being a conforming lot, it is a giant. It is over 25,000 square feet in an R15 zone. So, in looking at it, in addition to it being a giant lot, it is sectioned so that the area that is on Wheeler and approaching the residential area is an existing garage, an existing big driveway that, but the house is on Wheeler. We looked at it, the idea was that, yes, it was going to result in two non-conforming lots. And we did consider the fact that we could have made one a conforming lot, but that would have made the corner lot on Hamilton substantially smaller. So that, from a planning standpoint, and the planner will explain it, we felt that that would be more consistent on C2 with the zoning that is in the area. It wouldn't be any restriction on the amount of a house that could be built there and still be conforming with the rest of the neighborhood. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Fletcher to come back. Oh, I thought you ran away. Have a seat, Paul. Let me ask the first two questions. Mr. Fletcher, you are a licensed engineer, correct?
Well, how about we just...
And I would ask you to accept them.
Well, let's swear. Let's swear them first.
Yeah, all right, okay.
Okay. Raise your right hand, tell them you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
You've got one more, too. Thank you. Your name and address has not changed in the last hour?
It hasn't, thank you. And, and your testimony in this application, Mr. Fletcher's going to be as an engineer, a planner, or both?
Both.
All right. He is accepted.
Thank you. Mr. Fletcher, I'd like you to address the application and the variances that are required as a result of this subdivision, and specifically as to each lot, the variance that are required.
Do you have an exhibit for the board?
We do not have a mounted exhibit. I assume you each have copies of the plans?
And, and, my feeling was, and this is my fault, I thought that the board having the plans would have posted them themselves up on the, on the board.
Yeah, I mean, this is, it's a public hearing. The board expects, and in the TRC memo, we, we put a note that you should come with a, with a laptop so it can be projected onto the screen.
I understand. I, I did understand that, and I think Mr. Fletcher felt, as I did, that the board was going to have it posted, and I apologize.
Perhaps I'm old school, I, sorry, I don't have the technology to, to do that right now.
How did you develop the plans?
I meant the technology, I have a laptop here and it's on the screen.
I understand.
I have a...
I gladly will have the plans shared with anybody who's here on this application.
Mark, what, what do you think we should, we should do with the ability to...
I mean, it's, I, I was going to punt it back to the board. I mean, it's, it's, usually at a hearing, there's, at a minimum, they're on a board, but the board has, the board has been actually asking applicants to move away from that because that's even sometimes hard for the public to see, a two-by-three-foot board.
Right.
So for years now, we've been putting it, Christine puts it in all of her correspondence, I, you know, we put it in our reports, that we want to project it up on these screens. So we're not beginning just talking about this lot and that lot, and this variance and that variance, everybody can see what they're talking about and not just hearing words.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need that to be able to evaluate it. I mean, I don't know how rich the board feels, I see a lot of head nodding. I mean, if you don't have the technology to do it, you can, you guys can project it, right? I mean, you just need to be able to have a thumb drive or something to be able to do it, right? I mean...
Let me take this one. I, this computer, I cannot, this is, this is actually recording everything, and it has the agenda and everything, so we, I don't mean this in a nasty way, but it's not our job to make sure that's up there, and we personally don't have it because our function up here is to do something else. It's not to project fine stuff.
So you will need to come back with the ability to show us the plan and for us to be able to see it.
Well, I, I do think the township has computers, it seems to me, I've seen them used in council meetings to put something up on the screens.
Well, somehow it has to be worked out, but you guys can work it out, but we can't, we can't evaluate it tonight without any exhibits or versa.
Okay. I'll confer with Mr. Fletcher as to doing it.
We have, you'll have to give us an extension as well. Christine, this is where you come in. Deadline is 9:20, so they're going to have to give us an extension to whenever they can come back, whenever we can accommodate them.
All right, Mr. Chairman, if you give, I don't want to set a precedent here, Christine, we've been trying to push, I mean, I, I have a laptop, I could go back to my office, so it'll probably take a few minutes, but, you know, I could probably project it off of that, off of my laptop.
I think if he can do that, can we first see how many members from the public are here? Anyone from the public? Two? I mean, I don't want to state the gentleman's age, but he stated his age as a reason for why he isn't, you know, prepared tonight to use the technology. I think we can be, show some empathy, given that, and grab the laptop.
All right, so let me go get that, just a few minutes.
Let's take a five, 10-minute, so we'll, we'll adjourn till 8:40-ish now, 8:45?
And I appreciate it, this was a surprise to me, and I apologize to the board.
Do, do you have the plans on a thumb drive or something such that they can be plugged into...
They submitted it to us.
Yeah, I think Mark's got it.
Mark got it.
But he has them on his computer, that's true.
Anybody needs a bio break, now's your time.
My thanks to the board, Mark, very much. Thank you.
We've got three screens working, which is more than good enough. So we're going to not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. So please proceed.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
To continue?
The subject property commonly known as 1231 Hamilton Street, lot 55.01 in block 348, located at the intersection of Hamilton Street and Wheeler Place, is a 25,648 square-foot property, has an existing two-story framed dwelling and garage driveway. Close proximity to the intersection. The house setbacks of the existing home are 25.2 to Hamilton Street, 15.7 to Wheeler Place. Could you put sheet two up on one of the screens, perhaps? The applicant proposes to subdivide the property, creating two lots. The interior lot would be dimensioned 90 feet by 124.86 feet in depth. The corner lot would be irregular, having 91.42 feet of frontage and a similar depth, but it's got a wider rear line of 139.39. Two lots are located in the R15 zone, and variances are required for lot area. Interior lots require 15,000 square feet. We're proposing 11,237.8 square feet. Corner lots require 18,000 square feet. We're proposing 14,410 square feet. There is a requested variance for lot frontage on the corner lot, 91.42 feet along Wheeler Place, and for the interior lot, 90 feet along Wheeler Place versus the 100 feet that's required in the zone. 120 for the corner lot. There are two existing violations. They are the front setbacks of the existing home from Wheeler Place, which is 15.7, and from Hamilton Street, 25.2. The setbacks from Wheeler, the front yard required setback in the zone is 30 feet because Hamilton is an arterial road, a county road. The required front yard setback from that road is 45 feet. So again, those are existing conditions, but they are, and they're not exacerbated by the proposed subdivision.
Would you now address, as a planner, whether or not it is more preferable to have a undersized lot, noting the dimensions that you just testified to, than a almost twice the size of the minimum lot sizes? Which one would be more preferable as a lot?
My opinion as a planner is that the proposal we're making is preferable to keeping the oversized lot, which is 70% in excess of what the 15,000 square-foot requirement is in the zone. This is clearly not a C1 variance, it's a C2 variance, where the benefits can significantly outweigh any detriment. We need to show that the purposes, or some of the purposes of the municipal land use law, would be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance requirement. And I believe in this case, we're promoting Goal A, where we promote the general health, public health, safety, and general welfare. I think by providing new housing stock for the citizens of Franklin Township is promoting the general welfare. One of the other goals is to provide adequate light air and open space. And I would point to the fact that the new home meets all required setbacks with regard to front yard, side yard, rear yard, lot coverage by building and by pervious coverage. And therefore, I believe it is, therefore, providing the light air and open space that is required by this particular zone.
Mr. Fletcher, let me ask you this. As to the present zoning, again, would a 25,000 or 26,000 square-foot lot versus an 11,000 square foot? Which one would be technically more volatile of the present zoning?
Technically more what?
Which one would be in variance to the zoning intent of that area? The R15?
Well, the two lots we're proposing are consistent with the goals of the R15 zone. They're very close to the 15,000 rather than being almost twice the size. So I think it's a better zoning option to have two lots in this location as opposed to just one.
On the new proposed lot, what size house could be built on it without variances?
We're proposing a footprint of 1750. So that would be about 3,100 square feet of living space.
Would that be consistent with the neighborhood, especially on Wheeler?
Yes, it would.
Would 25,000 be consistent?
I believe that would be the largest lot in the neighborhood.
The frontage on the existing house is on Hamilton Street, not on Wheeler, correct?
The house faces Hamilton Street, correct.
And to the rear of the house, but still on the lot, is the, a large garage, a large driveway, a large apron area. That would be on the Wheeler side of the lot, correct?
Correct.
What planning standpoint effect of Wheeler lot remaining on Hamilton Street for the zoning?
I think it would have very little effect. The effect of this project would be to put a new aesthetically pleasing home, an entryway into the neighborhood on Wheeler Place. I think it would be an improvement to the neighborhood, potentially add to the value of the existing homes. With regards to the reports...
So before we continue there, so we've heard some planning testimony where you gave some justification for your C2 variances. I'd like to hear from our planner. Mark, could you give us your planning opinion? That is to say, if you're finished defending the C2 justification?
I have not finished the planning testimony.
Okay. We can wait till that, because we kind of delved into that. Now we're going into the reports. So do you want to finish the planning testimony?
I'll finish the planning.
That would be good.
Yes, Mr. Fletcher, I'm going to complete his testimony as to planning.
We also have to show that the variances will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance or the master plan. Clearly, this is intended to be a medium-density residential area. That's what we're proposing. I think inserting a new home to an existing development that will be consistent and aesthetically pleasing, built to the new modern standards of...
Can you please hold the mic closer to your mouth? I can't hear you.
I apologize. I was saying that it's my opinion that the variances will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan or the zoning ordinance, since we're proposing a home of medium residential density, essentially consistent with the goals of the R15 zone. That's basically my planning testimony.
I'd just like to hear from Mark and get your planning perspective on this for the C2s.
Well, I guess I, first, I have a few, just a few factual corrections. You know, I've heard a few times that this is almost twice the required lot area. That's not true. This is a corner lot. The minimum lot area requirement is 18,000 square feet, not 15. So this is, this lot is about 7,600 square foot larger than required. I also just, I just don't, I don't understand the testimony as a planner. What's, I just don't understand what's violative or wrong with a compliant lot. You're required to have 18,000. You have 25 and change. That's not a zoning violation. That's a compliant lot. I've also heard some testimony that's kind of met opinion. We've heard that the proposed lots are consistent with the neighborhood, but no testimony to back that up. We have had, you know, some situations in the past, mostly with the zoning board for undersized lot cases, which is a whole different thing. But usually, as part of the negative criteria, they'll evaluate the neighborhood and show that there's lots that are consistent with that size. We haven't had anything that, we've heard testimony that's consistent, but nothing to support that testimony that's been provided to you. I'm just looking at a lot right here. That's 0.82 acres. That's, I think, 30,000, if not more, square feet. So I just don't understand, you know, again, as a planner, I don't understand how it's a better zoning alternative to have two non-compliant lots than one compliant lot. So that's really all I can say at this point. I haven't heard any compelling testimony to contradict that.
And can I ask, Mark, the other thing in your TRC report that impacts what you're saying and all of these variances, is you're noting that there's a possible existence of a wetland area, and it says, "A letter of interpretation shall be obtained." So if there were wetland areas that required buffering, that would, or would that, I'm asking the question, potentially impact the building envelope and the setbacks and variances that the applicant is testifying that they have?
It could, depending on the presence of the wetlands, the delineation of the wetlands and where they are, where they extend to, and what type of wetlands they are, and if there's a buffer associated with that.
Do you feel, as our planner, that we can evaluate this application tonight in the absence of that LOI?
That's a good question. I mean, ultimately, let's say it was a, I don't know if the variance, do wetlands exist or they don't? If the board was to end up approving it, it's under the DEP jurisdiction anyway. If the wetlands are there, and if there are wetlands that require a 50-foot buffer, even if the board was to grant the variances, and the DEP doesn't grant those permits, they're not building it. But I don't know if that issue is necessarily critical of the grant to the variances, more so than the issues we discussed before about proving the C2. I think those are far more critical to the answer of whether the board has enough information and sufficient testimony to grant the variances.
I agree. Thank you.
May I just say that I don't want to give the impression that anything that was said was to mislead the board. Trying to emphasize the fact that all of the rest of the homes, other than this corner lot, this lot does approach close to twice the minimum lot size that is required. That was the only point that I was, I think, and Mr. Fletcher was trying to make, not that, knowing this is a corner lot. There's no question about that. What I, in opening, was trying to explain was that could have cut this lot so that, as I've heard before, this lot would have been a conforming lot, but it would have left the corner lot exceedingly short as to the required 18,000 square feet. I think what Mr. Fletcher was trying to say was that, from a planner standpoint, it is more preferable to have a two lots that, while not conforming, still are more adaptable to the neighborhood than making one 15,000 square feet and the other one somewhat 4,000, 4,000 or 5,000 or more square feet to the existing lot. And that's why the effort was made, to try to cut it into the two lots with both being non-conforming, but still conforming to the neighborhood. Hopefully, that was the impression that Mr. Fletcher and I were trying to portray. And I have to tell you that part of that was hearing a prior application here as to why we didn't look to cut it so that one was conforming and the other one was non-conforming.
So actually, I'm glad you raised that issue. I don't like to do a bake-off between applications, but there's certainly some similarities. So as you noted just now, if you were to make, if you were to try to do what we asked the other applicant to do, you'd have an 18 and a 7 to make that conforming. And, I mean, you have 18,000 in the corner, right? That would be conforming. And you have 7, which is very, very different from the zone. So we won't want you to do that.
With the other way.
So you're trying to split the difference and make both palatable, for lack of a better word. The issue that doesn't distinguish you from the other application is that you have a conforming lot, and you're creating these variances because you want to subdivide it for whatever the reason may be. And I think the board struggled with it in the last application, probably will struggle with it when that application comes back, and is going to struggle with it in this application. Because, and I think this was brought up in the last application, there are areas where there's all these lots when they were laid out in this area, where, use a word that's been bandied around, kind of weird. And the way they were weird is, you know, they've got various amounts of depth or width that doesn't, but they're a lot, and somebody would try to build on a virgin lot rather than subdivide it. So that's another thing the board is going to struggle with. But I see a parallel, more than a parallel, an identity with the last application, is we're subdividing, creating variances where we could have a conforming lot as it is now. And truly conforming, as Peter said for the last one, you know, there are areas of nonconformance there that he didn't get to lay out, but he will when he come back. But here we have, I think, something that's truly conforming. So we're going to struggle.
I think what the problem was, was that it's a 15,000 minimum square foot on Wheeler. But a lot of people on Wheeler chose to build it on, as you've indicated, bigger lots. So it's changed, that initially changed it from the zoning to some bigger lots. And I think what we're talking about is looking at it from 15,000 down to 11,000. We're not talking about going from houses that may be built on 20,000 or 25,000 square feet and measuring it against this lot, proposed lot.
But for example, if the example Mark gave about the one on 0.82 acres, they were to come in with a subdivision, probably going to be compliant in every way, because it's huge. Again, we're going to struggle with the C2 criteria, right? It's not a better zoning alternative. It's not better for the township that I can see in any way. It may be better for the applicant, but the better zoning alternative, let's say, light and open space, I mean, that was one of your criteria. I don't see how that can be said when you're adding building, you're, by definition, decreasing open space and circulation and all this other stuff. So I'm not so sure I'm in board with some of your positive and negative criteria arguments either.
Okay. But a requirement was for this application, if it was to be passed, was that the big garage would have to be knocked down and removed. The apron, concrete, big area, impervious, would have to be removed. So it does comply with that part of the zoning.
Right. But it always did, because all the variances are not for lot... But it always did, because all the variances are not for lot coverage, lot area, floor area, any of that kind of stuff is not what you're asking for. So those, the way you remove those things or not, you're still going to create that because you're drawing a line.
Well, but again, we could move the line. It would just make a much more non-conforming corner lot.
Yeah. And I don't think we would probably advise you to do that. I think we're going to have to judge this on its merits. Yes, Tim?
I just want to make the point that, as you have testified, you have the garage, you have the paved turnaround space and so forth, and then the existing house. And this is the evidence that whoever built those made full use of this twenty-five thousand square foot lot. They perhaps wanted a twenty-five thousand square foot lot so that they could set the garage away from the house, and at least they certainly used the twenty-five thousand square foot lot. So I don't see any argument that two undersized lots are better than one twenty-five thousand square foot conforming lot, which is one, only a hundred and forty-two percent of the minimum. Remember what a zoning law sets up our minimum sizes for lots? You can perfectly well have a lot larger than the minimum set by the zoning law. In fact, in many cases, it's desirable.
Well, I, other than the fact that I'm sure this house was the existing house in the area long before any of the houses were built on Wheeler. So that's that. The other thing is, I think what's telling is, I think the neighbors are in favor of this. It's an improvement to Wheeler in that area. It's an improvement.
Excuse me, I wouldn't want to go there. How can you say that?
Please.
Let's just strike that. How are you saying that the neighbors are in favor of it? That's why we have a public portion. We'll hear from the neighbors.
I, I understand.
And if we don't hear from the neighbors, the absence does not mean that you're in favor of it. No. But we can, we can judge this on its merits. So I mean, you can continue, I'd like you to address the TRC report, now that you've finished with, we've finished the planning discussion, the variance discussion as much as we can, I think, beat that horse. Let's try to go through the TRC report, and we'll see, see where the chips fall.
Apologies. Paragraph one talks about the different variances that are being required, we've been discussing that. Number two asks whether we had gone to adjoining properties to see if they could sell us more land, I think.
Yes, we've presented the two letters to the adjoining property owners with no response from them.
Were they submitted to the board?
Yes.
Number three, we had some discussion about wetlands. The DEP mapping does show possible wetlands on the adjoining property. I feel comfortable there's no wetlands on our property. It's conceivable there is, and there could be a buffer from that wetlands. However, the house is set back an adequate distance, it's, I think, fifty-nine feet from the rear property line. I don't see it affecting the, the ability to build a house were the board to approve this application. However, as Mr. Haley mentioned, we're subject to the approvals of NJDEP if required.
So it looks like four and five are statements of fact, six, you already testified that those are going to be removed. We need some pest control here.
Number seven, there's some confusion on labeling. The seventeen-foot dimension is actually the width of the driveway. The setback is nineteen point three-four. Number eight, we are seeking a waiver. There is code and sidewalk along Hamilton. There is no sidewalk along Wheeler Place. Number nine talks about the existing service lines. I know we show the proposals, but not the existing ones on the, on the corner house. We would revise the plans to show that. And number ten, we understand meter pits would be required for the proposed house and the existing property, and we have no, no problem with any of the requirements of the Township Sewerage Authority, which is in paragraph eleven. Number twelve, we note that.
Number thirteen is contingent upon...
Yeah, we, we have got a treatment removal ordinance requirement table on the, on the plans. I understand it would be further reviewed should we go to the building permit stage. We would be agreeable to obtaining any official addresses, street addresses from the nine-eleven coordinator, and we understand that all fees need to be paid as, as required if the ordinance is passed. And we certainly agree that CAD-generated data files would be submitted as required.
Thank you. Let me go back to the TRC report, I think we got addressed everything there. Let me open it up to the board for any questions, since I think we're through most of, if not all, the testimony. Looking, I'll look left this time for it.
I, I just don't know if I have a clear enough idea as to why this is a better zoning alternative. And you did mention some environmental factors, but again, we're seeing that that's not really the case with adding impervious cover, the wetlands possibility. So if you want to take any time to clarify why it's actually better than the conforming lot, I know we've talked about it, but I'm still not clear on it.
Well, we are providing stormwater management in accordance with the Franklin Township ordinance. There's a seepage pit proposed, which will be collecting the roof water for recharging, stormwater mitigation.
I understand that, but that's kind of just addressing the problems you're creating, and I don't see how that's a better alternative to what exists.
Well, the thrust of our argument is that by eliminating, you know, a garage, an old garage and driveway, constructing a new single-family home that will be aesthetically pleasing, will be an uplift for the neighborhood, it will be a positive impact.
Okay. Thank you.
That's, that's my, our position.
And let me clarify, I'm not, I'm not requiring, as we were giving feedback to the last applicant, you know, if you have no questions, that's fine. If you do have a question, that's fine. I, I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, but feel free if you, you can, if you don't have any questions, if you do, just raise your hand and ask, we'll ask it. Anybody down here first? All right? No? Okay. Jim?
Paul, I thought you mentioned in your testimony that you thought there'd be a positive impact on real estate values if the application was approved? Did I hear that correctly? Okay. Are you a licensed real estate professional in the state of New Jersey? Thank you.
Mr. Fletcher?
I am not in the place of Mr. Parker, correct.
You're a licensed real estate broker?
I am not.
Thank you.
Jim, you wanted to say something about the letters from the...
I had an opportunity to review the letters, and they both had the original certified return receipt signed by the people involved, and we take council's representation that there was no response. I'd like to move them in as Exhibits A1 and A2. Christine, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let's open to the public. Do public have any comment on this application? Please come up to the microphone, give your name and address, please.
Turn the mic down.
Yeah.
Now, if you can raise your right hand for me, please. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. Lou Lauter?
Yes, I swear.
Okay. And your name and address, please.
My name is Edith Bergin, and I live at four-five-two Wheeler Place.
Okay. Just get real close to the mic, they're, they're not very sensitive.
Okay.
Perfect.
Well, first of all, okay, I already said that. Oh, yes, we live at four-five-two Wheeler Place. We are the next-door neighbors of thirty-two, no, twelve-thirty-one Hamilton Street, and just last month, we had our three-year anniversary, anniversary of becoming first-time homeowners, and it has been the happiest three years so far. And this is why we oppose to this proposal. We love our home as it is, we have an awesome yard, and the perfect amount of privacy between each neighbor. This is why we fell in love with this house in the first place. My kids love, enjoy our big backyard, well, not, not as much of a, maybe our terrier enjoys it more than we do, but we don't know what exactly is going to be built here, but I just know it's going to affect the whole ambience of the neighborhood. We've been there three years, lovely neighborhood, small quiet street, good amount of space between each neighbor. So, yes, we do, we did get the letter, and honestly, we're here personally, personally saying we're not interested in selling any part of our land. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Bill.
Long time no see.
How you doing? O'Connell, twenty-five Spring Street. I think...
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I usually do, yes, sir. Sometimes too much.
Will be the case today.
Raise your hands very fast.
All righty. Couple things. When researching this discussion, I, the first thing I noticed is that the last time this land was sold, the bill of sale said five hundred dollars, you know, whatever the, is on the township website, five hundred dollars, which struck me as odd. The second thing is, is the applicant is in Hillsborough, okay? So this, this site has lasted, lived a long time, or, you know, been around a long time, which means that, and I know it's been sold, so he got what he bought, okay? The property, as was stated, is, is actually very consistent with the neighborhood. You know, there's like, I think the smallest lot is like a half an acre, okay? There are other bigger ones, but the smallest slots are a half acre or two. So even though you're trying to make an argument for the zoning, the fact of the matter is, relative to their comment, it has, the, the, the street has a aviance, for lack of a better word. The thing that struck me, oh, so I, did I say, I'm wondering if this is a rental, rental property? If I didn't, I'm just wondering, you know, land speculation, rental property, the whole thing, okay? A three thousand square foot house on eleven thousand square feet, it would be like a white elephant in that neighborhood, okay? So it's not conforming at all, all right? It just, it would really change the whole look. And the other thing that's, I would want to know from the board, is when they subdivide that lot, is it only just a building lot? Could it become a street? Could it do something other than be a building lot? And that's my question to the board. Thank you.
Well, I'll answer that. I mean, the proposal is to subdivide it for the purpose of building a single-family home. I mean, if they wanted to do anything other than, the zoning is for single-family homes, so if they wanted to do anything other than that, they're going to the zoning board for use variance.
And there is a lot on Wheeler Street that is point three-four acres, so slightly below a half acre.
Sorry, my, my bad, I did not close the public portion, seeing nobody else come forward from the public portion, I move to close. All in favor?
Five.
Okay. I would like to ask Jim to just give the board a brief summary of, of the positive and negative criterias for C2 relative to what the applicant provided.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to leave it to your own ears, but I did not hear the applicant's testimony identifying what the benefits were to the Township of Franklin. I did not hear anyone identify what the detriments might be, and I didn't hear any analysis of how the benefits substantially outweighed the detriment. Most of the testimony was that this is a better zoning alternative, but all that is, is a shorthand phrase for the required analysis of saying what are the benefits to the town, not the applicant, what are the detriments if the application is granted, and then doing a weighing analysis. If you heard it, great, but I'll leave it to you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other comments from board? If not, I'll, I've always been instructed to do this, and Jim, again, I would make a motion to approve, and then we would vote, or do we do it in the opposite? I don't...
Any board member can either start the process by either a motion to approve or a motion to deny.
Okay. So that doesn't matter. Okay. So I'll, I'll make a motion to deny, based on the, the fact that I did not hear myself a analysis, I heard a lot of conjecture. I did not hear an analysis that was a quantitative or even very qualitative weighing that would give the board the confidence that the benefits substantially outweighed the detriments. And, and the character of the neighborhood is clearly, from those who live there, and what we can see on the plans, and from the data in the township, not fifteen thousand square foot lots, but substantially larger. And I think this would be out of character, so I, I would, I would make a motion to deny on that basis.
I'll second.
Okay, before I poll the board, if you agree to say deny, and you want to say, "I agree with what Mike says," that's fine. If you have other opinions on why you want to deny it, you, you have to give that, okay? If you want to approve it...
A yes vote is to deny.
Okay, so just to deny?
That's the best way to put it. A yes vote is to deny.
Okay. Okay. So who seconded, I'm sorry? Mr. LaCourte? Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilman Morrison?
Yes.
You or Chase?
Yes, and I pulled out, all I heard was Mr. Fletcher's opinion, unsupported by any factual assertions, that it's better to have two lots rather than one. If we were to accept that argument, if that were to be accepted generally, it would simply destroy our zoning. If this were a precedent, we would have to approve any application that created undersized lots, and I'm not prepared to do that. I think a point of our zoning is to set minimum sizes for lots, and as I said earlier, there's no requirement that lots be as small as the minimum allowed.
Thank you. Bob LaCourte?
I will deny.
Sammy Sh, oh, sorry.
Oh, yes, yes.
Sammy Sharan?
Yeah, I vote yes, and for similar reasons. In fact, it wasn't even factual, some of the testimony, it's a forty percent difference, and there's really no reason to, you know, to say that, that has to be the, the, the most that we can get out of the land. It's, there's a minimum, and it's great that the, that they've exceeded it, but not enough. And I didn't hear any real weighing of the detriments similar to that. and I didn't hear any real weighing of the detriments similar to the other things. And the reason why I'm explaining is because we were told before that when we deny, we should explain or approve, so I am explaining my thought pattern there, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sammy.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes, and let me explain why as well, for those very reasons. Um, I empathize with the public comment. Um, as someone who also lives in a neighborhood where, um, it's been around for a while, um, I think that a lot of people, when they go to look for a house, they look at the community, they look at the area, and they have their criteria for what they're looking for in a neighborhood. Um, similar to what, uh, Dr. Chase said, if community members move into neighborhoods because they're looking for certain things, and then all of a sudden, that neighborhood can just be changed, I, I, I think it just destroys the whole criteria of what you would look for when you go to find, um, so that's why I'm saying yes to the denial.
Thank you. Charles Brown?
Um, I'm gonna vote yes, um, on the basis that I don't think it was, um, aculeo articulated, where there would be, you know, benefits and detriments. Um, but that's not the sole reason. I don't think we heard that in the prior case neither, so I don't want to set a precedent here for saying that's the reason why I'm, I'm voting yes, and then we hear one in the next case, and then use that as a reason for saying yes to that one. Uh, yes, as in, in favor to that one, want to be clear. Um, I, I, the, the, the thing that decided it for me ultimately was the neighbor. I think if there was, um, a sale of property here to expand the, the lot size, I probably would have been more in favor, mainly because this encroaches closer to New Brunswick, where the need for more land, I think, um, I mean, the need for these bigger lots is less so. I mean, we could explore greater density there, um, but I'm gonna say no.
Thank you.
I'm gonna say yes.
Yes, to the... I gotcha.
Yes is no.
Robert Thomas?
Hi.
I don't think your mic's on.
Although, yes, I agree with the reasons that, uh, have been stated. Uh, in addition, I really didn't hear anything compelling to tell me why, again, in this particular instance, in this neighborhood, why, uh, to a con- a conforming lot, uh, should be changed to two unconforming lots. I also think that the oversized lot of, uh, the size of this lot as it exists is more in keeping with the neighborhood than a smaller corner lot, an 11,000-square-foot lot that would be created for, for them.
Thank you.
Am I able to say something else? I don't know, just on the record. Uh, we've been saying, um, a compliant lot, and this came up in a previous case, but when we've been saying out of compliance, we have been referring to the amount of square feet. We haven't been, you know, comparing compliance along with lot furniture and so forth.
I mean, conforming, I mean, to answer you, that's a great question.
I'm just, I'm just saying, that's what we've been saying.
A conforming, a conforming lot to me means it's conforming in all ways. Um, what we heard in the last application was there were elements, one of it being a through lot, um, that was nonconforming. Um, in this case, my understanding, it is conforming as presently constructed.
Right.
Okay. Rebecca Hilbert?
Uh, yeah, I voiced my, I voiced my concerns earlier about the criteria not being met for the variances, in my opinion, so I'm going to agree and vote yes.
Okay? Chairman Orsini?
Yes, since I made the motion, you know my thoughts.
Okay.
So, um, the board has voted unanimously to deny. Um, that wraps our business tonight. Christine, we are back, uh, the third week in August.
We are back on September 4th, and we will be out at Route 27, so when I send you out your email, it will have, like, very large that we are going to, uh, Route 27. I ask that you get there early, because if there's a lot of people, you have to park way far away, and you might be late to the meeting.
So, um, I'm, I'm going to ask Jim to check with the applicant, because I told them very clearly, unless they had, uh, this is, uh, what's it called? Onyx, right?
This is Onyx, that's correct.
Yeah, we're not going anywhere, um, on September 4th, unless they can tell me that they have access. If they can't tell me they have access, I'll hear them in 2030. I don't care if I'm still alive and here, but, um, they're not going to be heard September 4th, so I'm going to have Jim check on that.
Okay, Jim, if you'd just like to communicate your findings to Mark and I, just so we can, and I will alert the rest of the board, uh, per se, pertaining to what they're going to find out.
Yeah, and if, if that, if they don't have that, and they don't have it by then, then there's no plan. I've always said that, and I'm not going to change. Um, so maybe if we got to schedule something else in here, we could do that, but you, you...
I was just going to say that Davidson Properties is also penciled in on that date, so it, just if Onyx is not coming, you may not have a snow day, we call it. Uh, you may actually have to come, but that would be here, not in, but we'll communicate everything to you guys.
So as minimum, we're off till September 4th?
Correct.
Everybody enjoy the rest of your summer, because by that time, it's the unofficial end of summer, so.
Yes.